Good afternoon. This is the December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Johnson County Planning Commission. Should we start off by calling to order doing a roll call?
Sure. Gregory Wolf.
Present.
Michael Paderis.
Present.
Kelly Rast is absent. Brad Miller. Absent. Lindsay Grisay.
Here.
Fred Staret.
Present.
Steve McGank.
Here.
Timothy Oric. Leslie Hind.
Present.
Craig Connell. Absent. Andrew Logan.
Present.
And Kevin Hogan.
Present.
And then I will go ahead and proceed with the Zoom statement. This meeting is now being recorded in the board hearing room with planning commission members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. For Zoom participants wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app at the start of the agenda item on which you desire to comment. Comments will be received from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by the name or phone number used to join the Zoom webinar, and your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and the city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to two minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call nine one three seven one five nine six six six. Board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking, and please speak into the microphone so that people attending via Zoom can hear your comments, can hear you, and your comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you.
And does the, um, does the attendance establish a quorum?
Yes, we have a quorum.
Okay, just wanted to confirm. Um, I, so I think we're at the time of the meeting where we would do public comment. So are there any members of the public available for comment?
We do not have anyone with their hand raised, and no one has signed up to speak.
Okay, then I think we will move on. Um, are there any disclosures of the commissioners of any ex parte communications or any conflicts of interest that we would, we should, we are obligated to disclose at this time? Okay, hearing none. Um, the agenda that we have for tonight, do any of the commissioners have any additions or deletions to the proposed agenda? Okay, hearing none. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
And, um, should we do a verbal vote? Okay, um, all in favor of adoption of the agenda, say aye.
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 All right, so it looks like the agenda is adopted. So going on to the approval of the meeting minutes from the November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, do any of the commissioners have any additions or deletions or corrections to make to those meeting minutes that were sent out to us?
Madam Chair, Greg Wolf, I move to approve the minutes from our November meeting.
Do I have a second? All right, um, and can I get a verbal all in favor, say, for approval of the November twenty-eighth meeting minutes, say aye?
Aye.
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 All right, the meeting minutes are approved. I think that moves us on to the New Century Air Center and Executive Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan Update.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sean Penley, County Planning Staff. I'd like to give a quick introduction to this update. This is our uh, public hearing with the planning commission for this update. And what this update is, is uh, it's an update to the county's rural comprehensive plan, but it's specifically dealing with our airport land use compatibility studies. Uh, we do have two airports in the county. You're all familiar with New Century Air Center and Executive Airport. And this update will be to update the compatibility plans for both of those airports. This is a project we've been working on for over a year now, so we're very excited to bring forward to the, the planning commission, the official public hearing for this update. And I am joined by several staff I want to mention, uh, this evening. Jay Leipzig, our Director of Planning. Diane Wickland is the project planner on this update. We also have Larry Pete, the Deputy Director of Airports with the county, and Cynthia Dunham with the county's legal staff, and she's also the counsel for the Airport Commission, so she's been very involved with this, uh, whole update. So, um, if you recall, we had a study session with the planning commission on October twenty-fourth, and at that time, we presented the, uh, initial information and draft plans for both of the airports. And this, the airports, um, as we mentioned at that time, the, uh, the state has statutes for, uh, review of any planning and zoning applications within one mile of either airport. So the purpose and the, the primary goal for these, uh, these plans, these compatibility plans, is to, um, to review and determine compatible land uses and to mitigate any potential adverse impacts around either airport. That's the purpose of this review. So these applications go forward through review to the Airport Commission, and then they're approved by the Board of County Commissioners. But what the planning commission's involvement at this time will be to review the draft plans, where, where these are updates to both of those airport compatibility plans. So we look for your input and, uh, comments on these updates, as well as the public comments. So, um, as part of this whole process, we've had several meetings. We've had four planning advisory committee meetings, and our PAC group is, uh, there, there are representatives from different groups in the, the county. The Airport Commission, Planning Commission, Board of County Commissioners, and the different cities that are impacted by these plans. We have three cities that are, uh, have land within one mile of either airport. Uh, cities of Valetha, Overland Park, and Gardner. And we've been working with all of those cities' staffs, as well as having representatives on our PAC committee meeting. In addition, we've held two developer stakeholder meetings for these proposed updates, and we've got some very valuable input from the developers as part of this process. And then we've had several public information workshops at both airports. We, um, had our consultants Kaufman Associates help lead those efforts for all of our public information meetings, uh, at both New Century Air Center and Executive Airport. So we had a lot of public involvement and, uh, questions and, uh, input for both of these, uh, compatibility plans. So as I mentioned, our consultants, uh, Kaufman Associates, uh, have been very valuable, uh, experts in this overall process. They're our consultants on this project. They happen to be based right here in Johnson County, so it's been a tremendous, uh, work, working relationship with Kaufman Associates. Corey Lewis and Madeline Holloman are here this evening, and they'll go through the details of the proposed compatibility plan updates and answer any questions. But it's been a pleasure of working with them, and we really appreciate all of their input and guidance to this process. So, um, what we hope to get tonight, following the presentation by Kaufman Associates, uh, answer any questions, provide, uh, gather any input and comments from the planning commission, and then see if there's any one, uh, pub, any more public comments. Uh, we also did have our first public hearing with the Airport Commission, and that was on December sixth. At that time, we presented these draft plans that are included in your packet this evening. Uh, the Airport Commission, um, we had also had a study session with them prior to that in October. There were no changes to the draft plans that were, uh, recommended by the Airport Commission, and they did forward a recommendation for approval of these draft plans as presented. Uh, with that, I will just mention again, what we're looking forward, uh, after the presentation, to getting comments and questions from the commission. And then the goal would be to forward on, hopefully, uh, have a, a recommendation to forward on these, uh, proposed compatibility plans to the airport, uh, to the Board of County Commissioners. We anticipate, uh, a study session or a committee of the whole meeting with the Board of County Commissioners at the beginning of the year, the early January. We think, uh, January fourth, I think, is the date we have scheduled for the study session. After that, uh, we will schedule a final meeting with the Board of County Commissioners for adoption of these plans. So that's the process. Uh, with that, I think, uh, Jay wanted to make a quick comment, and, um, I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, Jay Leipzig, Planning Director. I have nothing to add. Uh, that was well said, and he summarized all of the, the key dates, uh, coming before the, uh, the Board of County Commissioners too. So thanks, Sean.
Alright, thanks, Jay. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to Corey Lewis to go through the draft plans and give a presentation. And, uh, both Kaufman Associates and staff will be available for questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, appreciate the opportunity to join you this evening, uh, to present on the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan Updates for New Century Air Center and Johnson County Executive Airport. Uh, as Sean mentioned, uh, we've, uh, been engaged in this process, uh, for over a year, began in August of, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, um, and held our first, uh, public meetings and, uh, planning advisory committee meetings in October. Uh, along with those, uh, or following those meetings, we had a developer stakeholder meeting, uh, in advance of our second round of meetings, so planning advisory committee meeting again, uh, in January of two thousand and twenty-three, and then, uh, then followed up with another round of meetings in May of two thousand and twenty-three, and ultimately, uh, had another round of, uh, uh, meetings in August of two thousand and twenty-three. And since that time, we've been, uh, engaged with the, uh, Airport Commission, uh, with, uh, Cynthia Dunham, uh, and, and receiving comments and, and making refinements to the plan, uh, and that you see, uh, in your packets tonight. So since the, the version of the plan that you saw in, uh, October, some of the, the substantial changes, uh, have been, uh, changing the, the phrasing of steady area to airport influence area. Uh, we've changed, uh, the, the C L U C P to A L U C P, so that's Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. Um, we incorporated, uh, legal comments, uh, comments from the airport staff. Uh, so Larry and Brian, uh, were able to provide comments, uh, received some specific, specific comments from the Airport Commission members. Uh, we removed some text to clarify some language, uh, added in some, uh, uh, hyperlinks to FAA advisory circulars, and then put the document back through a full QA QC process. Kind of stepping back and, and, and looking at, uh, uh, you know, kind of why, why do we have these plans and, and why is it time to update them? Uh, so there's the Kansas State Statute, uh, statute three oh seven E, uh, which is Sean mentioned, uh, any changes in existing zoning within one mile must be approved uh, by the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, and over time, that's been interpreted, uh, these types of projects have been reviewed. So in addition to, uh, zoning changes, preliminary development plans, final development plans, Platts, uh, zoning changes, conditional use permits, and special unit, uh, use permits have all been subject to this process. Uh, overall, uh, you know, we have the documents comprised of four chapters. There's a purpose and scope, uh, uh, which kind of lays out the framework for the plan. Uh, then there's the airport environment, so this is talking about the airports themselves, the facilities there, and the land uses, uh, and development near the airports within one mile. Uh, then moving into the implementation definitions, uh, so this is just, uh, information to help the, uh, Airport Commission, uh, implement the plan, and then ultimately compatibility policies, uh, and criteria. So, uh, now I'd like to talk about what may change. So the, the existing two appendices, uh, in the comprehensive plan, uh, are, they're largely focused on a, a land use plan approach. So the land use plan states the types of land uses, uh, that should occur near the airport, uh, and what is proposed to change is, uh, looking at it more of a, from a count compatibility standpoint. So if a, if a proposed land use, i- if a land use is proposed within one mile of the airport, the question is, is it compatible with the, with the airport? Uh, and there, the, uh, proposed plan has, uh, a, a compatibility matrix, uh, that accompanies these safety zones. Uh, so what you see on the screen here, uh, and actually the private, prior screen, the, the, the yellow line there is a one-mile buffer of the existing airport property. So this, this existing airport property line is defined on the Airport Land Use Plan. So these are documents that are on file, uh, with the airport and are communicated with the, uh, coordinated through the FAA. So this is the one-mile buffer, uh, uh, of the existing airport property line. And now, over time, this may change. Uh, so, uh, in accordance, you know, with, with, uh, property acquisitions or sale of property at the airport, that, that line could change, and then ultimately this plan would need to change. So using that boundary, uh, we established, uh, safety compatibility zones, uh, which are shown on the screen now. Uh, so this is, uh, based on guidance from FAA. So there's a, an advisory circular that came out in fall of two thousand and twenty-two, uh, which, uh, focused on land use compatibility planning within the vicinity of airports. So it brought up, brought together a lot of guidance from across the United States. Uh, and so this, these zones are actually, um, discussed in that advisory circular. So along with these zones, there are compatibility, there's a compatibility matrix. So down the, the left-hand side of the table, those, uh, well, actually, across the, each, each zone is identified in the table. So the, you know, zone one is the closest into the airport. Uh, that's the runway protection zone, and then there are, uh, the, the zones extend out from the airport. So in the farthest left, uh, there is a dwelling units per acre number. Uh, and then moving to the right, there's a maximum non-residential intensity. So it's density for residential development and intensity for non-residential development. So this is commercial development, industrial development, these sort of things. And then, uh, there are also other columns, uh, that specify allowable land uses, uh, allowable condition and, and land uses that are not recommended for that zone. The plan also includes, uh, definitions to allow the practitioners, uh, and the public to understand, uh, what the terms are, uh, turn the, understand the terms that are used in the plan. Um, there's also a provision for similar uses. So there are several land uses specified within the, in, in that compatibility, uh, criteria matrix. Um, but this, the similar uses, uh, section, uh, gives the flexible, gives the practitioners, the folks implementing, uh, implementing the plan, some flexibility to, uh, contemplate other land uses, uh, not included in the, in the compatibility matrix. Um, as you saw, there, there are several zones, uh, and those are drawn based on the, from the runway end, and some of those zones may cross, uh, uh, different properties. So there's a provision for how that would be addressed, uh, if, if a certain property was, uh, in, within two different zones. It's also a provision for infill development, so how, uh, properties would be treated, uh, undeveloped properties that are, uh, adjacent to, to, uh, develop, two or more developed properties, uh, how that infill development would be addressed would be that it would, that infill development would be allowed at a similar, but not, uh, you know, uh, higher density or intensity than the neighboring land uses. Uh, notification regarding potential hazards. So this is the, uh, the seventy-four sixty process that is managed by FAA. This is largely looks at the height of structures, but can also consider, uh, potential sources of, uh, electromagnetic interference or glare or wildlife hazards, those sort of things. Um, so there is, uh, notification, notification required to the executive director that, uh, the, uh, Airport Commission, when a pro, uh, proposed project has characteristics uh, that may result in the creation of, creation of a ha- air hair hazard to air navigation. Uh, or if the, uh, the project proponent has received, uh, a determination from FAA uh, that the project would constitute a hazard to, or obstruction to air navigation. So, uh, one note about, uh, uh, noise policies. So there, there, there's appendix that relates to noise. Um, we prepared noise exposure contours, uh, and all the documentation for those noise exposure contours included in the plans. However, uh, as indicated on the, the exhibits before you, the noise exposure contours, um, out to the sixty-five D N L, uh, level, remain on airport property. Excuse me. Based on this information, uh, we determined, uh, with, with county staff that noise policies, uh, were not needed as part of the plan because those, uh, those contours remain entirely on airport property. And, and that, that sixty-five D N L level is a level that is used by FAA to determine, um, compatibility. Uh, we can carry it forward, uh, height limit, uh, uh, height limitations, uh, for projects within, uh, one mile of the airport, uh, but added some and modernized some of the language about how those seventy-four sixty forms are filed. In the past, it has been, it was a paper form. Now there is a whole, a fully online process, uh, for submitting those filings. And then, uh, including some, uh, some policies, language around other flight hazards. So this is, uh, glare, uh, which may be mistaken for, uh, uh, runway lights by pilots. So this is, you know, in, in, in the night, if a, if a land use has lighting that looks similar to runway lighting, uh, trying to discourage that sort of, uh, that, uh, aspect of the use. Um, sources that, of dust, steam, or smoke, which may impair, uh, pilot visibility. Uh, sources of, uh, electrical, uh, interference, which could, uh, interfere with the aircraft navigation, uh, communication system. And then also landfills and other certain, uh, agricultural uses that could, uh, attract wildlife. Carrying forward, uh, and, and kind of modifying the, uh, provisions for open spaces. So it was determined through, uh, just discussion with the PAC and with planning staff that the shift to the compatibility matrix and the, um, the density and intensity requirements there, provided the, the, the open spaces needed or that, that were addressed by other similar policies in the current plans. Uh, and then also a notice of a proximity, proximity to the airport. So this is, uh, for projects that are within one mile. Uh, they would, uh, along with further, as, as a condition of those approvals, would receive a notice that the, the property within the subdivision is located within one mile, uh, of an airport. So this is a common, uh, disclosure practice that, uh, used, used throughout the United States, and it has been in place, uh, in Johnson County, along with the, the, the existing plans. So as Sean mentioned, uh, there, we, we had an Airport Commission, uh, public hearing on December sixth. Uh, we're here before you, uh, tonight, and then, uh, looking forward, uh, as we move forward through the approval process for a B O C C study session in January, uh, and hopefully, uh, adoption in, uh, February timeframe. Thank you. Uh, be happy to answer any questions, uh, if you have them.
I, I, this is Commissioner Grisay. I just had one quick question. Um, the, the noise decisions that you made, were those based on actual measurements of noise at the property line, or was it more of a study that was done?
Yeah, so the, the, the standard practice for developing noise exposure contours is use of the FAA's aviation environmental design tools. This is a, a noise, um, model. Uh, so we take into account, uh, aircraft operations, the location of, uh, flight tracks, uh, the type of aircraft, the time of day, which, uh, is in, in the D N L noise metric. Um, time of day is important. Uh, nighttime operations appear louder in the op, uh, in the model than daytime operations. So this is, uh, this is the process that's used, uh, uh, in the aviation planning, uh, industry for, that's how you develop noise exposure contours. Um, so we can actually, we do, we do an existing contour and then a, a twenty-year forecast contours. You can, you can increase those operations and anticipate, uh, changes in the fleet mix of the type of aircraft that are operating at the airport. Um, so it's, if it's known that, you know, other jets are coming in, or, you know, uh, if there's a shift, you can, you can take that into account.
And so I guess the, my follow-up question would be, are there assumptions that go into that model that make the need for noise recommendations or regulations within this, um, plan? Not necessary, but if those assumptions were to change, that we would want to revisit that in the future?
Yes, yes. If there were a, you know, looking at a the twenty-year forecast, it's a, you know, it's pretty aggressive. It's, there, there's quite a bit of, you know, increase in operations, I think. So the contours would get bigger. Um, and one thing that I didn't note it, note is that that twenty-year forecast contour for, uh, New Century also, um, includes a runway, a proposed runway extension, or a runway extension, uh, to clarify, runway extension that's identified on the airport layout plan. Not, no action is, uh, recommended, uh, at this time for that. Um.
Uh, this is, uh, yes, uh, this is Sean Penley, County Plan Staff. I will add to, as Corey mentioned, in this plan for the proposed contours, the noise contours are not, uh, showing in, any need for, um, a, a activity or, or an effect outside of airport properties based on the, the models and the numbers that were, uh, resulting from the study. However, in the previous plans, and this has obviously been updated, and they've got more accurate information now to, to account for current types of aircraft operations. But in the previous plans, that New Century as an example, New Century Air Center did have some noise contours that did extend beyond the air center's property. And they, it was mostly in that area in south, uh, of New Century Air Center in guard, um, in parts of Gardner's city limits. And, and then as an example, we did have some guidelines that talked about that. Any developments that would maybe, uh, happen within those areas in the noise counters either be, would make sure that they've mitigated any noise impacts, or maybe they consider soundproofing or some type of construction practices that would minimize noise for any occupants. Or, um, maybe certain activities or certain types of land uses might not be recommended. But that was, that was based on the, the current plan and the old data for sound models. Now with this update, this will include more accurate noise contours in it, and it will not affect the, the areas that would be considered for noise impact would not go beyond the airport property. So there wouldn't be any need now, but you're correct. If, in the future, for whatever reason, if there were any change in operations or type of aircraft that might go beyond the boundaries of this, we may need to update that at some point in the future.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Do any of the other commissioners have questions?
Yeah, Craig Connell, I have questions also on noise.
Wait, and I just want to note for the record that Craig, um, Connell has come in attendance, but he wasn't here while we did our initial forum.
Yeah, stuck in a train line on Santa Fe. Um, have we, this is part to, to the county people, but have, do you know, have we received noise complaints from, especially executives, why I'm worried, worried about, about noise in the past that, um?
Yeah, yes, Sean Penley.
Or time, time of day or something.
I heard that question of Larry Pete. He's a, he's an expert on any complaints regarding noise in county airports.
Okay. This is Larry Pete, Deputy Director of the Airport Commission. Um, yes, we periodically do receive some noise complaints. Seems like the, the majority of noise complaints come from ironically smaller aircraft operations and rotorcraft helicopters. Um, we have a flight school at Executive Airport that the helicopters, we have any, uh, medevacs that are, are based there, and they tend to seconds count when they launch, and they had, they go right on heading and go over the neighborhood to the east, for instance, and we're trying to actively, excuse me, actively, um, engage that group to where, when they come back, they might leave at ten thirty on a Friday night to have seen, when they come back at one thirty, that they don't go low and slow over those neighborhoods. They come in from the north and south on our approaches that are already established. So, um, that's one of the things that I'm trying, I'm working with FAA right now to try to get that implemented. But, um, to your point, the noise complaints, they really don't, they're, they, they, they're kind of sporadic, and, uh, um, particularly, it's focused with the training type flights that stay in the airport traffic pattern and, uh, continuously go around, do touch and goes, practicing takeoffs and landings. But the jets, they, they generally are, they power up and they get out. And I think it's important to note that with this noise contour study, as time goes farther and we get further down into the future, engine design itself is quieter and quieter. We've gone from really loud when, you know, back in the seventies and, and even early eighties where airliners were just horrendous takeoff, and so are some of the business jets as well. And at stage three, noise standards have been set, so they, they continuously march forward to get quieter, so.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Commissioner Grisay. Just something you said was kind of interesting to me because I think that part of this big airport change was kind of having more targeted zones kind of at the end of the runways, kind of contemplating that the aircraft would take off in a certain way and land in a certain way. But it sounds like you're saying that there may be certain types of aircraft that would not follow and need a runway like a helicopter. It would go off to the side. And so do these models contemplate that type of air act, air activity? Because I guess in my mind, I was always just thinking of your typical airplane that would need the runway to take off and landing.
Corey, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe the noise, the, 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 the profiles that we have in the appendix, they do so show some of those, um, off-pattern type departures and arrivals that, that are attributable to those kind of operations.
Okay, thank you.
This is Greg Wolf. Quick question. I, I'm new to all this, so apologize if this is dumb question. So I read both these New Century Air Center and Johnson County Executive Airport. Between these two documents you gave me, are there any material differences? Are we treating one differently than the other?
No, they're, they're largely the same. They, just the mapping, uh, is obviously reflective of the, uh, the corresponding airport. But yet the policies, uh, that are put forth But the policies that are put forth for compatibility are the same for both airports.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Kevin Hogan here. Are most of these complaints commercial or residential? The complaints that you have had.
Oh, let Larry answer that. Again, Larry Pete with the airport commission. I would say the majority are 100% of them are residential. The, the neighbor, the neighboring community around the airport and specifically Executive Airport. I get a few from New Century, but that airport is much larger. There's there's less development to the east. We have quarries to the north. You have Prairie Highlands, which they tend to be more affected by the Army Chinooks that go in and out of New Century, which if you're not familiar, those are large transport heavy lift helicopters that are based there. And our traffic pattern and everything, it, nothing really comes from Gardner as far as any noise complaints. It's almost exclusively from.
I live less than a mile from Executive Airport. And I've never heard a complaint about the noise over there.
Thank you.
And we just, we get used to it. It's like growing up next to a railroad track. You get used to it. And so I just wondered, you know, if it was commercial or if it was residential.
Madam Chair, you ready for a motion?
I am.
Madam Chair, I, I moved.
Commissioners, we do need to open up the public hearing just in case. I don't know if they may, but we just need to open that up. Yeah.
Public hearing, my apologies.
All right. So I think now would we open up the floor for public comments regarding the, the New Century Air Center and Executive Airport land use compatibility plans?
We do not have anyone signed up for public comment.
Okay. So now we can go for a vote.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, yes. Yes. Then that closes the public hearing. Thank you. I'm learning all the rules and I appreciate the help. And.
Madam Chair. Jay Leipzig, sorry, I'm over here in the corner.
Yeah, sorry, I was.
Hey, if I could make just a brief statement just before we do vote, just to say that this, this is a huge step. In terms of, you know, in the past, we, we've, our, our airport review has been really dictated by a, a land use plan that we have surrounding the airport. This is, this is a new concept based on density and compatibility with land uses. So so the land use can change and which, which happens over time. And so this, why this is a, it's a great step forward for us because it's, it's based on the compatibility and the density of development rather than than land use application that we had before.
Yeah, I can, I can say that for myself, I can tell a lot of work went into this and a lot of thought and appreciate your efforts in answering our questions. Okay, so let's.
Madam Chair, I move that the planning commission recommend approval to the board of county commissioners of the proposed amendments to the Johnson County Rural Comprehensive Plan regarding the update to the New Century Air Center and Executive Airport land use compatibility plans.
Can I get a second?
Steve McGank, I second that motion.
All right. Should we do a roll call vote?
Yes. Gregory Wolfe.
Yes.
Michael Proderis.
Yes.
Lindsay Garcia.
Yes.
Brad Starrett.
Yes.
Steve McGank.
Yes.
Timothy Orick. Leslie Hind. Craig Connell.
Yes.
Andrew Logan.
Yes.
Kevin Hogan. Thank you. Motion pass.
Thank you. So I think we would move on now to the directors' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jay Leipzig, the planning director. My comments this evening will be very brief. Also just wanted to thank our consultants again from Kaufman Associates and thank you for your, your work as well. A couple of things on coming up for the board of county commissioners, we do have our, our change to the lot of record date that you all approved at our previous meeting that is going before the board of county commissioners on January the 11th, 2024. And I, I don't anticipate that that date being changed. So I think that that is fairly certain. The, the board did have a slight break after December 16th, so they're not meeting the next couple of weeks. So that's why that that item is a little bit delayed. The other thing I wanted to tell you is that we, our next meeting is scheduled for January 23rd, which would be the fourth Tuesday in January. We would like to do a kind of year-end review, which is a document that we've prepared in the, in the past that shows chronologically by date what the planning commission actions have been throughout the year. And then also give you a brief overview what, what our future items might be as we move into 2024. To talk about that, we're also getting ready to begin the update to our subdivision regulations in 2024, which we have multi year project and it encompasses a lot of things we've talked about over the last couple of years in terms of some minor text amendments to our subdivision regulations. So we're excited about that. Starting that process, but we wanted to provide an overview to you on that, that meeting on January 23rd. Our next meeting that we have scheduled is in February and that would be on February 27th. We're proposing having a, a joint meeting with the, with the planning commission and the zoning boards is kind of an educational meeting. But that date is not certain yet. So we're, but we're looking at having that probably in February if we can, but we have to run that through the, the approval process with the, with the calendars, with the, throughout the county. So those are, that's a very tentative date at this point. With that, that's all I have from my report this evening.
Wonderful. The, do any of the commissioners have any older business or new business that they would like to talk about? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Greg Wolf.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And I just wanted to say thank you again for the lovely dinner that we had. We really appreciate it. Happy holidays, everyone.